All to order of the Carney School District Board of Education Regular Meeting, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united all, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Matt Baker.
Here.
Jason Clint.
Here.
Christina Lindsay.
Here.
Bruce Whitezer.
Here.
Nick Vazquez.
Here.
Aline Bailey.
Here. We have a quorum. Adopt the agenda?
May I have to adopt the agenda as presented?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have School Spotlight. Carney Junior High.
Good evening. For those of you that don't know me, my name is John Gooden. I'm the principal at Carney Junior High School. It's my second year here, and I still absolutely love it. I really like this month because we get to come in here and showcase some of the great things that we have going on at the junior high. We have several great programs. We're a building full of great students, great teachers, and tonight we get to showcase a little bit of that with our student council. And I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Rothfuss.
So I'm Samantha Rothfuss. I brought some of my officers, and they'll be speaking with you tonight. We have our president Zoe and Sophie, and then we have Henry, Avery, and Avery to represent our group. So we're going to start off with Zoe sharing our mission as student council.
Hi, I'm Zoe Pillar. I'm the ninth grade president, and our mission as student council is basically just to make the junior high a safer place, well, not safer, but a more inclusive space for the students here. And we plan a whole bunch of events to make sure we make it just fun for all of the kids to be at. And yeah.
I'm Henry West, the eighth grade vice president, and events that we have done is PJs and popcorn with just like you wear PJs and like we watch a movie, Pie the Teacher, which we were able to do at our assembly, canned food drive to help like raise like food, and Winter Fest, which we just did like a little celebration like after school, spirit stick competition, which helped get people involved to like have school spirit at our school, and then a crush for your crush for like a crush soda for your crush or someone who's crushing it, so to raise money.
Hi, I'm Avery Pickering. I'm the secretary for the freshmen. And some of these events, luckily, I was able to take pictures, but a lot of these events are actually spirit days. So you can see in the bottom right corner is one of our social studies teachers after he raised, I'm pretty sure it was over a hundred dollars for pieing in the face. And there's many games that we did at assemblies, like we did a human, oh gosh, what's the name, a human hungry hippo, that's the name. And a lot of the other people were just like dressed up for fun spirit days. We had Elf and the Grinch and just Sophie in the bottom corner just speaking at assemblies, and that's just kind of what we did. It was a lot of fun.
I'm Avery Wirick. I'm the eighth grade secretary. And what we did to like collaborate with other people is we would like have announcements over the KJH-TV thing so people would understand. And then we had band and vocal performances at assemblies to like honor them. And then we had more library resources. We helped that like add more to them, and the same with the PE equipment.
I'm up. So part of our goal as student council is not just to make KJH a place where students belong, but our community members as well. So some new things that we did this year was our Veterans Day Assembly where we invited any parent or guardian or friend of a student who was a veteran to be honored at our assembly. And then we also did a trivia night inviting families, students, and community members to put together teams to compete in trivia.
I'm Sophie. I'm the eighth grade president, and we get a lot of real world just learning and experiences from just student council in general. We get a lot of public speaking, like right now. We organize a lot of events. We organize one every quarter, making financial decisions that goes in with also making just the events. We know how much to budget for. We learn to lead others, and I also feel like we learn to follow others and just communicate. And we get an interview and application for this, so we learn real world whenever you need to do job applications and stuff like that.
We want to thank you all for all of your support of student council. It's been a blessing to be able to lead this group of students and watch them develop. If you guys have any questions, we'd be more than happy to answer what you have.
So what's the best event? Like, what's the one you like to do the most? Like, what was the biggest hit this year? Why? All right, the teacher? You're going to give Mr. Croll to do that again? Okay, good. You should do it every year. Good.
So how do you, do you apply and interview to be on student council? Is that what I got from what you said?
It starts with an, we get emails that starting out for an application. The application will be to, if you choose to be officer, if not, you're represented.
So their interview process, they interview with me and both of our building principals if they're interested in being an officer, just to express what skills they have that qualify them for the officer position and why they're interested in the role as well.
Do you think a school board trivia team would do well, or do you think it would do poorly? We might get a find out next year. I might put a team together. We'll see how it goes.
We would love to have you. This year, the theme was Carney, so hopefully our school board could represent there, but can't keep the same questions every year.
Very good. Well, thank you so much for coming tonight.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Come on up. Look, you're going to line up right up here.
Next, we have recognitions. Mr. Heil.
Good evening. The band has had a great year this year, and our most recent thing that bears recognition is the students who qualified and performed at the State Solo and Ensemble Festival back at the very beginning of May, and that happened at Mizzou. We had ten students take part in, I believe it was thirteen or fourteen events, and then we had three gold medals, bronze medal, and the rest were silver. And so we have those students. Do you want me to just go in the alphabetical order? So we're going to bring those students up. We have a few students who had prior commitments, but I believe we have a quorum for our group here as well. Daisy Burnham played a clarinet solo. Elizabeth DeMares is not here this evening. She played in a saxophone ensemble. Megan Greider played a baritone saxophone solo. She played in a mixed woodwind ensemble and a saxophone trio. So she was a busy lady. Alexandra Kinsler and Olivia Kinsler, I think they're both gone. Alex played in a solo on her saxophone and in the saxophone trio. Olivia played an oboe solo. Then we have Haley Robertson, who played a flute solo. Charity Smith, who played a clarinet solo and mixed woodwind trio, correct? Yes. Phoebe Taylor couldn't be here this evening. She played a flute solo. Drew Wimhoff played a clarinet solo. And then Clara Wensel played a flute solo and also took part in that mixed woodwind trio.
Thank you all for coming. Be sure to practice the lines. Thank you all. Next, we have Vocal, Mr. McKinney.
Hello. I'm shorter than, uh, Mr. Heil. First, before we recognize our kids, I want to thank the Carney Board and Ray Wykel. We had a conflict this evening with a theater banquet, and so the majority of our vocal kids are actually currently at another fine arts thing, and they're receiving their theater awards, and they're actually probably about right now announcing next year's musical. No, I won't tell you because I can't until I know for sure. But y'all find out, I'm sure, tomorrow. But we had sixteen events qualify on the vocal side for state music contests this year. Out of those sixteen, we had four events receiving gold medals and the twelve other ones receiving silver, so very strong showing from the vocal music department. Very proud of our kids. Seeing as most of our kids are there, what I think I'm going to do is just kind of name how they did and what groups and who were in there. And then I do have students here that were able to make it, so we'll bring them up. But definitely big shout out to Ray for coming out, and Mr. Vazquez was also there. We were able to pass out certificates. Ray got a picture of them, and they were able to do it in front of an audience of people at a banquet still, and they are very, very honored, and they wanted me to pass along their thanks to you guys as well. Okay, so our results. Vocal solo, Emmy Everhart received a silver rating. Vocal solo, Ronan Roddy received a silver rating. The tenor and bass sextet, Colton Walker, Tyler Eadie, Ronan Roddy, Camden Haney, Luke Zerlini, and Aiden Vazquez received a silver rating. Vocal solo, Archer Schmidt, silver rating. Miscellaneous vocal ensemble, this was our witness double quartet, Delaney Boyd, Archer Schmidt, Logan West, Emmy Everhart, Jules Ford, Drew Nelson, Avery Janik, and Connor Green, silver. SAB six, this was a freshman group that qualified, the first group I've had in many years, all freshmen. Sophia Cousinoglu, Samantha Billingsley, Maverick Kearns, Kate Smith, Brody Burton, Audrey Curran received a silver rating. Casey Springer, vocal solo. SATB double quartet, Delaney Boyd, Logan West, Jalen Dean, Emmy Everhart, Camille Herman, Ronan Roddy, Connor Green, and Aiden Vazquez, gold rating. Vocal solo, Connor Green, gold. Vocal solo, Brody Burton, silver. Vocal solo, Tyler Eadie, silver. Vocal solo, Phoebe Taylor, silver. Vocal solo, Sophia Cousinoglu, silver. Vocal solo, Logan West, gold. Vocal solo, Jules Ford, gold. And then vocal solo, James Billingsley, silver. And the students that we have here this evening that we're going to acknowledge, we have Brody Burton, Audrey Curran, Jules Ford, and I don't think I saw Connor in the room, and Camden Haney.
Okay, that's the fun part. We have no public comment tonight, so we'll move to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Bailey. You know, it's hard to believe we're wrapping up the 24-25 school year, two more days. You know, and again, as we see here tonight, kids just continue to do outstanding things, and that comes with support of teachers, parents, coaches, and amazing families that provide that support. So we know that it requires all of us to see the results that we do on a year-to-year basis. So this past weekend, we had graduation. Big shout out to Dr. Gustafson. Again, wonderful event. Two hundred and forty-eight students across the stage saw completion, so congratulations to them. Want to give a shout out to Drew Wilson if you happen to watch graduation. He did a phenomenal job delivering the student speech, so hats off to him. And if you want to bookend something, tomorrow night, the early education graduation will be tomorrow night, so that'll be lots of fun seeing little five-year-olds in their caps and gowns, so mark your calendars. Want to also mention, we've got, while graduation has occurred and the school year is wrapping up, postseason is still well underway for a lot of our students, track, baseball, soccer. So again, our kids are really continuing to thrive. Tonight, I just want to mention, we had, want to reference a board vacancy, so that's been a process that we've advertised. We had ten people apply for school board for that vacancy. The board interviewed earlier today three candidates, and they will make a motion at a future date to fill that vacancy. So again, reflection of the incredibly supportive community. Changing gears, the legislative session has wrapped up, so while we're going to continue to watch that as the dust settles, a couple of things I want to just mention. Legislature passed some things that we are going to continue to watch. We are very thankful to the legislature for recommending full appropriation for the foundation formula and transportation. This House bill, too, goes off to the governor's desk. We know, if you're watching the news, that there's very likely a special session will be called. So while the money has been appropriated, whether we continue to see, realize, all of that has yet to be seen, but we're appreciative of that work. Another bill that has passed the legislature is an omnibus bill, that's Senate Bill sixty-eight. And there's a couple of provisions in there I just want to mention, as they will likely materialize over summer if the governor passes that. And it has to do with a potential cellphone ban, and that would be a bell-to-bell cellphone ban if approved and signed by the governor, and that would take place for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So we're currently working with our attorneys on what that would actually mean. It actually is written so that it would be more than just cellphones, but it could include iPads and smartwatches and earbuds, so there's a potential ripple effect with what that could look like. So I just wanted to forecast that for you. The other thing is, we've had some discussion here, especially as an administrative team and with the board regarding the one hundred and sixty-nine day calendar. So there's some implications there on what we would do with AMI. So just want to forecast that. There's still some things left to be done. Again, special session could inform us even more, but a lot of work happening in Jeff City. So with that, can I turn it over?
Thank you. Okay, next, we have the consent agenda.
May I have the consent agenda be approved as presented?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Information on this project? Hello?
Good evening, everybody. So got good news to report this month. So we set a goal early on in these projects. Each of the three schools that we're working on has an addition to it and then a renovation over the summer, so our goal was to be as far along as possible with those additions by the time school got out, so you could focus all of our forces on the inside. And just happy to report, we're right where we want to be. The additions are in great shape. So first picture here, this is Carney Elementary. This is the two-story, second floor space is, let's see, we've got paint on the walls now, ceiling grid is going up, so all that will be left to do is drop light fixtures in and then put flooring in. We're going to finish the second floor first and then move down to the first floor, so the drywall finishers are on the first floor, so it's just a few days behind it. So things are in really good shape right there. Let's go to the next picture. This is the outside, so the roof is on, all the windows are in except for that one in the bottom picture there, so we're what we call dried in, so everything's how it should be on the outside. Dogwood, this is the furthest one along, so this is essentially done. Roof's on, coping's on, windows are in. We'll do the site work as soon as school gets out for the summer, but in really good shape. The next picture is the inside, so really, we're painted out in here, light fixtures are hung. I think we're, let's see, we're starting carpet, or we're starting flooring tomorrow, and that's really the last thing in that space. A little bit of trim out and stuff like that, but it's in great shape. And then Hawthorne, so similar phase, outside's in really good shape, roof's on, there's a little bit of coping that goes right around the top of that wall to finish it up, but we're dried in here. And there should be one picture of the inside. So yeah, this is the inside space, and at Hawthorne, we've got the first coat of paint on the walls on the inside, ceiling grid is going in as we speak, so then light fixtures, flooring, and the trim out stuff. So all the additions are in good shape. Next week's a big week for us, so as soon as teachers move out, we move in in force. So we start demolition on Tuesday, and we've got a big summer of a lot of activity at one of these schools. So I feel like we got a great plan, and all of our trade partners are bought into that plan, so I think it's going to be a good summer. And then some of the deferred maintenance things that you guys have approved over the last couple of months, those will also begin next week, too. So things like carpet in some of the schools, window film on the schools, painting, and then we've got some flooring in Southview that'll go after summer schools out. So lots going to happen this summer. We should have some good updates over the next couple of months, but things are right where they should be. Questions for me?
We talked earlier about doing a tour later this summer, so it's real to us, so we're excited.
Yeah, we like tours, so we'll get one scheduled.
Awesome.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Financials.
All of the financials are in your board packet. The biggest thing we need to tell you is we have a fund balance reaching twenty point nine percent, hopeful that that continues to go up. We still have a lot of transactions going on in the district. Does anybody have any other questions about those reports?
Thank you. Program evaluation, health and wellness.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Caitlin Harstad, and I am the lead district nurse. I have been, this is my fourth year with the school district. The previous three, I was at Dogwood. So thanks for having me, and we'll just, I'll give you a little highlight on what we've been doing this year. I am currently working towards a Masters of Science in Nursing, specializing to become a family nurse practitioner. We have seven registered nurses, six with their bachelor's of science and nursing, and one that is currently working on her masters. We also have one orthopedic nurse certification on staff. Three of us hold the national certification in school nursing, and one is planning to take that exam this summer, so hopefully we'll add a fourth. Our licensed practical nurse has applied to nursing school to hopefully start soon to finish and become a registered nurse herself. For the 2024-2025 school year, we did have to hire for five vacancies. I'm happy to report that everybody is returning next year, so that's a big win for us. This slide just outlines our students with medical conditions. For this school year, we had two thousand four hundred and one that had documented medical conditions. This isn't an all-inclusive number, but it does give a fairly good representation of our student population. That number only increased by eighteen since last school year, so we're holding steady. This just outlines kind of our chronic health conditions that are diagnosed by a healthcare provider. These numbers have remained pretty steady over the last several school years, so just the most common things that we see day to day. This just gives a representation of how many encounters that each building sees. This data was run up until April twenty-ninth of this year. Since then, we have increased a total number of three thousand six hundred and forty additional encounters district-wide. So even though we're nearing the end of school, we're still seeing a lot of students and keeping them healthy in the buildings. Immunization compliance, so we work diligently to maintain the Missouri Department of Health and Human Services immunization requirements. For the 24-25 school year, we only had a hundred and sixty-five students with religious or medical exemptions. We also work closely with Clay County Public Health Center to host vaccine clinics at the middle school and high school. We host two clinics per year at each site, usually in the spring and in the fall. We also report syndromic information weekly to Derek Williams, who's an epidemiologist at Clay County Public Health Center. That just helps us monitor illness trends, especially during peak flu season. So we are excited to continue that collaboration. This is our, the screenings that we do within the buildings every year. On the left-hand side, you can see the Clay County data. This is a resource that's available to all students who wish to participate with parental consent, so they come in twice a year and do a dental screening and then fluoride varnish if they would like. On the right side is the Level Up Kids program, Miles of Smiles. This resource is available for families that qualify. It is a full-service dental program that comes to our district in the fall to provide those services. Other screenings that we do within the district is vision and hearing. Level Up Kids. Questions for me?[733.58-736.24][S01] We talked earlier about doing a tour later this summer.[736.24-736.98][S01] So it's real to us, so we're excited.[738.77-739.51][S09] Oh, absolutely.[739.51-740.24][S09] Yeah, we like tours.[740.24-741.71][S09] So we'll get one scheduled.[743.58-744.32][S01] Awesome.[744.32-744.82][S09] Thanks, everybody.[744.82-745.56][S01] Thank you.[747.03-747.82][S01] Financials?[749.08-751.84][S10] All of the financials are in your board packet.[752.08-757.16][S10] The biggest thing we need to tell you is we have a fund balance reaching 20.9%.[757.16-759.12][S10] Hopeful that that continues to go up.[759.12-762.45][S10] We still have a lot of transactions going on in the district.[763.45-766.41][S10] Does anybody have any other questions about those reports?[769.74-770.48][S01] Thank you.[772.91-775.45][S01] Program evaluation, health and wellness.[782.84-784.03][S11] Good evening, everybody.[784.03-789.84][S11] My name is Kaitlyn Harstad, and I am the lead district nurse.[790.71-793.45][S11] I have been, this is my fourth year with the school district.[793.45-796.74][S11] The previous three, I was at Dogwood.[796.84-798.24][S11] So thanks for having me.[798.24-801.74][S11] And I'll give you a little highlight on what we've been doing this year.[803.34-808.66][S11] I am currently working towards a master's of science in nursing, specializing to become[808.66-810.03][S11] a family nurse practitioner.[812.84-818.74][S11] We have seven registered nurses, six with their bachelor's of science in nursing, and[818.74-821.03][S11] one that is currently working on her master's.[822.24-826.71][S11] We also have one orthopedic nurse certification on staff.[827.77-833.24][S11] Three of us hold the national certification in school nursing, and one is planning to[833.24-834.74][S11] take that exam this summer.[834.74-836.08][S11] So hopefully, we'll add a fourth.[837.66-842.16][S11] Our licensed practical nurse has applied to nursing school to hopefully start soon[842.16-844.95][S11] to finish and become a registered nurse herself.[849.77-855.45][S11] For the 2024-2025 school year, we did have to hire for five vacancies.[856.12-858.74][S11] I'm happy to report that everybody is returning next year.[858.74-860.08][S11] So that's a big win for us.[866.24-869.62][S11] This slide just outlines our students with medical conditions.[869.62-874.84][S11] For this school year, we had 2,401 that had documented medical conditions.[875.74-881.53][S11] This isn't an all-inclusive number, but it does give a fairly good representation of[881.53-883.16][S11] our student population.[883.16-886.24][S11] That number only increased by 18 since last school year.[886.24-887.24][S11] So we're holding steady.[890.51-894.34][S11] This just outlines kind of our chronic health conditions that are diagnosed by a healthcare[894.34-895.41][S11] provider.[896.51-901.12][S11] These numbers have remained pretty steady over the last several school years.[901.66-905.24][S11] So just the most common things that we see day to day.[910.34-917.12][S11] This just gives a representation of how many encounters that each building sees.[917.12-920.74][S11] This data was run up until April 29th of this year.[921.91-928.74][S11] Since then, we have increased a total number of 3,640 additional encounters district-wide.[928.74-933.12][S11] So even though we're nearing the end of school, we're still seeing a lot of students and[933.74-935.71][S11] keeping them healthy in the buildings.[940.77-942.08][S11] Immunization compliance.[942.08-945.95][S11] So we work diligently to maintain the Missouri Department of Health and Human Services[945.95-947.66][S11] immunization requirements.[947.66-953.34][S11] For the 24-25 school year, we only had 165 students with religious or medical exemptions.[954.58-958.24][S11] We also work closely with Clay County Public Health Center to host vaccine clinics at[958.24-959.66][S11] the middle school and high school.[959.95-964.45][S11] We host two clinics per year at each site, usually in the spring and in the fall.[965.77-970.12][S11] We also report syndromic information weekly to Derek Williams, who's an epidemiologist[970.12-971.74][S11] at Clay County Public Health Center.[972.34-976.45][S11] That just helps us monitor illness trends, especially during peak flu season.[978.66-981.08][S11] So we are excited to continue that collaboration.[984.91-989.24][S11] This is the screenings that we do within the buildings every year.[989.24-992.71][S11] On the left-hand side, you can see the Clay County data.[993.53-998.45][S11] This is a resource that's available to all students who wish to participate with parental[998.45-999.03][S11] consent.[1000.03-1003.84][S11] So they come in twice a year and do a dental screening and then fluoride varnish if they[1003.84-1004.34][S11] would like.[1004.81-1009.03][S11] On the right side is the Level Up Kids program, Miles of Smiles.[1009.66-1012.24][S11] This resource is available for families that qualify.[1012.84-1016.95][S11] It is a full-service dental program that comes to our district in the fall to provide[1016.95-1018.03][S11] those services.[1023.84-1029.53][S11] Other screenings that we do within the district is vision and hearing.[1029.53-1034.24][S11] Level Up Kids, iCare, comes in to screen all of our students.[1035.58-1039.12][S11] They do kindergarten through seventh grade for us, which is really helpful.[1040.53-1045.66][S11] And then we get the kids in between, all kids that are new to Carney School District[1045.66-1046.41][S11] get screened.[1047.81-1052.84][S11] We also try to do ninth and 11th grade, but we can only accomplish those as time and[1052.84-1053.58][S11] resource permits.[1057.84-1061.24][S11] To touch on a few of our successes for the department, the health services team has[1061.24-1064.66][S11] maintained a positive impact on the students within the Carney School District through[1064.66-1069.34][S11] increased student attendance, communicable disease prevention, and maintaining a nurse[1069.34-1070.74][S11] presence in each building.[1076.84-1082.03][S11] Some opportunities for growth in nursing in general, there's always opportunities for[1082.03-1083.08][S11] growth.[1083.08-1089.71][S11] This year, we will focus this and next on including emergency medical situation awareness[1089.71-1094.53][S11] and response preparation in school setting, and also just increasing the professional[1094.53-1098.95][S11] development in relation to school nursing and how it differs from a facility or organization.[1103.58-1107.53][S11] Our program goal, we will continue training for emergency response and focus on common[1107.53-1112.53][S11] health conditions and how best to treat those within a school setting with the resources[1112.53-1113.27][S11] that we have.[1116.81-1117.55][S11] Questions?[1119.84-1126.34][S12] On slide five of my deck, but it's students with medical conditions that you showed,[1127.16-1134.95][S12] I note that in '21-'22, there was a larger increase in the number of students with medical[1134.95-1138.71][S12] conditions than every other year shown from an increase standpoint.[1139.03-1141.34][S12] Was that the result of a change in a definition?[1141.77-1144.41][S12] Was there, just curious if you attribute that to anything?[1144.41-1148.66][S12] That seems, that caught my eye.[1148.66-1150.84][S12] So I'm just curious if you have any thoughts on that?[1151.53-1153.03][S11] That's a great question.[1153.53-1155.12][S11] I'd be happy to look into that.[1155.12-1156.53][S11] Obviously, that was pre-me.[1157.66-1164.66][S11] My guess, off the top of my head, would be that was the year that we went from COVID,[1164.66-1167.16][S11] where we were at home.[1167.16-1172.24][S11] And then I believe the 2021 school year is where we did the schedule, where they came[1172.24-1173.24][S11] back, the hybrid schedule.[1174.77-1178.74][S11] But I am happy to look more into that and get an answer for you.[1181.34-1183.16][S12] I think I'd be interested to know if there--[1183.16-1183.91][S11] Absolutely.[1183.91-1186.24][S12] It seems to me to be a result of a definition, is what I think.[1186.24-1189.84][S12] Because otherwise, there's something very off about that data there.[1189.84-1192.41][S12] So that's, the only reason I pointed out is something seems weird about it.[1192.71-1193.45][S11] Sure.[1193.45-1194.19][S11] Yes, I will look into that.[1196.27-1198.16][S13] Overall decrease in our health room visits.[1198.16-1200.41][S13] That's what, any idea what's going on there?[1200.95-1202.84][S11] That, I did notice that as well.[1202.84-1204.84][S13] Yeah, it's a big, I mean, there's a big drops on that.[1205.03-1205.77][S11] Yes.[1206.84-1211.12][S11] I believe, you know, it comes down to charting.[1211.12-1213.03][S11] Are we charting every visit that walks in?[1213.71-1216.24][S11] That is something that I preach to them going forward.[1216.74-1222.16][S11] Something as simple as a chapstick request or a feminine hygiene product.[1223.24-1226.84][S11] I would like them to chart that so we can see kind of how many students are coming in[1226.95-1230.84][S11] and coming through the health room and what their needs are, so that we can better serve[1230.84-1232.03][S11] them going forward.[1236.74-1240.34][S14] I think it is worthy to note that Kaitlyn went over it pretty quickly.[1240.34-1244.16][S14] But she's done an excellent job supporting this wonderful staff that we have and didn't[1244.16-1249.03][S14] have any turnover this year, when that's been an area that we've had some concerns[1249.03-1250.03][S14] with.[1250.03-1255.45][S14] And she's provided excellent leadership this year and a lot of support for these[1255.45-1258.71][S14] nurses, and is encouraging those to get extra education.[1258.71-1262.24][S14] And it's just been, it's been a blessing to have her as the district nurse.[1262.24-1264.03][S14] So just wanted to point that out.[1264.62-1266.03][S06] How many men's do you guys go through?[1268.16-1268.89][S11] A lot.[1270.84-1272.16][S11] Maybe a little too many sometimes.[1272.16-1272.91][S06] It's all right.[1275.24-1276.45][S06] You might not want to chart those.[1276.45-1277.20][S11] Yeah.[1277.66-1278.40][S11] Yeah.[1279.74-1280.48][S01] Well, thank you very much.[1280.48-1284.53][S01] It is great to see that everyone's trying to continue education and to continue certifications.[1285.34-1288.41][S11] Yes.[1288.41-1289.16][S01] It looks like almost everyone is doing that.[1289.16-1289.91][S11] Yes.[1289.91-1290.65][S01] So that's awesome.[1290.65-1291.39][S11] Yes, it's great.[1292.03-1292.77][S11] Thank you.[1292.77-1293.51][S01] Thank you.[1296.53-1300.34][S01] Next, we have a written evaluation related to professional development.[1301.84-1302.84][S01] Questions about that?[1306.16-1308.34][S01] All right, we'll move on to action items.[1309.84-1312.74][S01] Career ladder plan for '25-'26?[1313.16-1317.74][S06] Move to approve the career ladder plan for the 2025-2026 school year as presented.[1318.24-1318.98][S07] Second.[1320.12-1322.24][S15] Any questions regarding the career ladder plan?[1322.24-1326.03][S15] It's minor changes, updates to dates and times.[1326.66-1330.74][S15] There has been a little change as far as trying to open up some more opportunities[1330.74-1334.24][S15] for teachers to have some more non-academic clubs.[1334.45-1339.03][S15] So we just reduced the amount of kids that it takes to hold one of those clubs from[1339.03-1339.84][S15] 15 to 10.[1339.95-1344.74][S15] And then also allowing teachers to count up to 10 hours of some committee work that's[1344.74-1350.45][S15] necessary for us to get input for our district through PTO events, activities, building[1350.45-1352.66][S15] leadership teams, wellness committee.[1352.66-1355.95][S15] They can use up to 10 hours to count that towards career ladder, too.[1355.95-1359.24][S15] Those have been a couple tweaks that we've made, but everything else remains the same[1359.24-1359.98][S15] from last year.[1360.34-1362.71][S13] So can you provide the context?[1362.71-1368.24][S13] And so how many more hours can I get if I'm a teacher with clubs?[1368.24-1369.84][S13] What was that again?[1369.84-1370.58][S13] If I want to do--[1370.58-1376.34][S15] Instead of having, so there was a ratio of students to staff.[1376.34-1380.74][S15] We had 15 to one, so 15 kids to hold a non-academic club.[1380.74-1382.03][S15] We wanted you to have 15.[1382.34-1382.84][S13] Okay.[1382.84-1385.91][S15] We lowered that to 10 so that would give a more opportunity for maybe a smaller[1385.91-1386.66][S15] group.[1386.74-1391.62][S15] We found that sometimes these smaller clubs that, you know, more of a niche area for[1391.62-1394.03][S15] certain students, that 15 might have been a little bit too many.[1394.03-1399.34][S15] Just trying to offer a little flexibility and lower the number that's required for[1399.34-1401.03][S15] them to be able to hold the club.[1401.34-1406.84][S15] So let's say you want to have our club, and one student signs up for it, we're probably[1406.84-1409.84][S15] not going to, we're not going to count that for career ladder.[1409.84-1413.03][S15] If 10 kids show up now, you'll be able to count that for career ladder.[1413.03-1414.77][S15] And before, the 15--[1414.77-1415.51][S13] Please, 15.[1415.51-1416.24][S15] 15 was the cutoff.[1416.24-1417.95][S15] So we just lowered the number to make it a little more flexible.[1421.24-1422.24][S01] Okay, any other questions?[1422.24-1422.98][S01] All right.[1422.98-1423.71][S01] All in favor?[1424.62-1425.36][S01] Opposed?[1425.53-1426.27][S01] Thank you.[1427.66-1429.84][S01] Professional development plan for '25-'26?[1430.24-1434.95][S06] Move to approve the professional development plan for the 2025-2026 school year as presented.[1435.34-1436.08][S07] Second.[1438.58-1441.95][S16] Before we use the professional development plan, Ellie Stewart's here to answer any[1441.95-1443.34][S16] questions, if you have any.[1447.16-1447.91][S01] Any questions?[1451.03-1451.77][S01] Very good.[1451.77-1452.51][S01] Thank you.[1452.95-1453.71][S01] All in favor?[1455.24-1455.98][S01] Opposed?[1456.34-1457.08][S01] Thank you.[1459.45-1460.74][S01] Boiler purchase?[1461.53-1466.74][S06] Move to approve the over $50,000 request for an elementary boiler as presented.[1467.12-1467.86][S07] Second.[1469.16-1469.91][S01] Questions?[1472.16-1473.03][S13] We've talked about this before.[1473.03-1474.77][S01] We've talked about this before.[1474.77-1475.51][S01] Is this the last one?[1475.51-1476.24][S13] Right.[1476.24-1476.98][S01] You don't have to--[1476.98-1477.71][S13] Wait, haven't we?[1478.34-1479.08][S01] I hope so.[1479.08-1479.82][S01] Okay.[1480.34-1481.08][S01] Good answer.[1481.84-1483.24][S13] I thought we had seen this before.[1483.24-1484.08][S01] All right, great.[1484.08-1484.82][S01] All in favor?[1486.34-1487.08][S01] Opposed?[1487.24-1488.08][S01] Thank you.[1488.84-1493.45][S01] Approval of agreement with CisCloud?[1494.16-1497.34][S06] Move to approve the agreement with CisCloud as presented.[1498.45-1499.19][S07] Second.[1502.34-1505.84][S16] We're just bringing this forward to you since it's something that's new.[1505.84-1510.12][S16] And any questions that you have, we can have Ryan answer those for you.[1513.12-1514.74][S13] We have not used them before?[1515.58-1516.32][S16] No, we have not.[1522.24-1524.45][S01] Ryan feels good about it.[1524.45-1525.24][S01] All in favor?[1526.84-1527.58][S01] Opposed?[1527.58-1528.32][S01] Thank you.[1529.34-1531.16][S01] Chromebook purchase over $50,000?[1532.12-1536.45][S06] Move to approve over $50,000 Chromebook purchase as presented.[1537.03-1537.77][S07] Second.[1539.12-1544.74][S16] And again, you know, we see this every year, an annual replacement for Chromebooks.[1545.03-1546.74][S16] Happy to answer any questions.[1550.24-1551.45][S12] Is this number pretty common?[1553.45-1555.16][S16] Ryan, is this number pretty common?[1555.16-1555.91][S12] Year-over-year?[1556.84-1558.03][S17] This is for the higher schools.[1558.03-1558.77][S17] That's a little higher than you.[1560.34-1562.03][S06] Usually go by building, is that correct?[1562.58-1563.84][S06] Kind of to rotate them?[1563.84-1564.58][S06] Yeah.[1566.45-1567.19][S01] All right.[1568.24-1568.98][S01] All in favor?[1570.12-1570.86][S01] Opposed?[1571.03-1571.77][S01] Thank you.[1572.62-1575.45][S01] Approval of preliminary budget for '25-'26?[1576.16-1580.84][S06] Move to approve the 2025-2026 preliminary budget as presented.[1581.45-1582.19][S07] Second.[1585.03-1590.95][S18] State requires us to have approval of any budgets before you can purchase any items,[1590.95-1594.74][S18] such as the computers, and this is operating budget only.[1594.84-1599.16][S18] So as more information comes in, in June, we'll bring you a full budget for all the[1599.16-1602.84][S18] funds across our district, as well as the best numbers that we have at that point in[1602.84-1603.58][S18] time.[1607.24-1612.45][S01] Everybody understand that we'll see more later, and this is just so we can do some[1612.45-1613.20][S01] ordering?[1613.45-1614.20][S01] All in favor?[1615.34-1616.08][S01] Opposed?[1616.24-1616.98][S01] Thank you.[1618.34-1622.74][S01] Item G, rescinding and adopting board policies on second reading?[1623.45-1633.84][S06] Move to rescind board policies C140P, C155P, G235P, I100P, I140P.[1633.84-1640.03][S06] Effective May 21st, 2025, and move to adopt, effective May 21st, 2025, the same board[1640.84-1642.53][S06] policy numbers as presented today.[1643.03-1643.77][S07] Second.[1646.12-1647.84][S01] Your favorite item of the whole year.[1649.45-1650.20][S01] All right.[1650.20-1651.03][S01] All in favor?[1651.95-1652.69][S01] Opposed?[1652.69-1653.43][S01] Thank you.[1654.53-1655.27][S01] All right.[1655.27-1656.03][S01] Board number comments.[1657.84-1658.84][S01] Do you got any comments?[1662.34-1665.45][S01] I know Dr. Miller mentioned it, but I just want to thank everyone for putting in a long[1665.45-1666.24][S01] day today.[1666.24-1672.53][S01] We had our board candidate interviews, and it's a busy process and a lot of things going[1672.53-1673.95][S01] on, so I appreciate everybody's time.[1673.95-1678.03][S01] And we had a great graduation, as Dr. Miller mentioned.[1679.41-1681.45][S01] Very, very good.[1681.45-1682.20][S01] Staff does a wonderful job with that.[1682.45-1683.20][S19] That was fast.[1683.91-1684.65][S19] It was very fast.[1684.84-1688.03][S19] I went to another graduation across the state, a much smaller school, and it took[1688.84-1690.24][S19] almost twice as long to go through it.[1690.84-1692.74][S19] So it was very efficient.[1693.84-1694.58][S01] Very good.[1695.53-1696.27][S01] All right.[1697.24-1701.84][S01] Important dates, as Dr. Lo said, we've got some postseason stuff coming up, so we'll[1701.84-1703.45][S01] be at prize of that.[1704.03-1706.03][S01] Two more days, last day of school.[1707.45-1708.74][S01] Knocking on wood, I hear.[1709.45-1710.20][S01] Ready, Bree?[1711.24-1711.98][S20] Yes.[1712.91-1713.65][S01] Ready, Dick?[1713.65-1714.40][S13] I'm ready.[1714.40-1715.14][S13] Here we go.[1715.14-1715.88][S01] Ready?[1715.88-1717.74][S01] Everybody's got kids but me that's here, right?[1717.74-1718.48][S01] So y'all ready?[1719.24-1720.08][S20] Mine's already done.[1720.08-1721.84][S01] Mine's already home.[1722.34-1723.16][S01] For college.[1723.62-1727.74][S01] Okay, the district is closed on Monday, Memorial Day.[1727.84-1730.34][S01] June 2nd, summer school begins.[1730.34-1737.53][S01] June 18th is our next board meeting, and we will have a special meeting on the 26th,[1737.53-1742.03][S01] closing out the fiscal year to vote on final payment of bills and those kinds of things[1742.03-1743.74][S01] like we do every year.[1744.84-1745.84][S01] Miscellaneous?[1746.84-1750.16][S06] Action for closed session to immediately proceed the regular meeting in June, including[1750.16-1755.95][S06] any record or vote to discuss items and issues allowable under Section 6108-021 of[1755.95-1757.45][S06] the Missouri sunshine law.[1757.84-1758.58][S07] Second.[1759.34-1760.16][S01] Vocal call, please.[1761.95-1762.70][S01] Matt Baker?[1762.84-1763.58][S21] Yes.[1763.58-1764.32][S01] Jason Clint?[1764.32-1765.06][S22] Aye.[1765.06-1765.80][S01] Christina Lindsey?[1765.80-1766.54][S23] Yes.[1766.54-1767.28][S01] Lisa Switzer?[1767.28-1767.92][S24] Yes.[1767.92-1768.66][S01] Nick Vasquez?[1768.66-1769.40][S25] Yes.[1769.40-1769.94][S01] Darlene Bailey?[1769.94-1770.68][S01] Yes.[1771.03-1771.77][S01] We are adjourned.[1771.77-1772.51][S01] Thank you.[1772.51-1773.25][end of transcript]